Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council on a successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, July 26. And if we could have a roll call?
Councilmember DeLasso?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, and if you would all kindly join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all. Thank you.
May I speak on this issue?
We are going to take the non-agenda and non-action items and allow for time at the end of the meeting, Mr. Varitch.
May I speak during or before the item which is required by the Brown Act?
The Pledge of Allegiance is not an action item, Mr. Varitch, so...
Because we just conducted an action by saying...
We are not voting on anything, we are not discussing anything that's not an action. Well, thank you. So I'm looking for approval over the minutes.
Move to approve at second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show that's a five-oh. And I'm going to go on to announcements. If I may, Ms. Alderman? Do we need voting on both of the minutes, or, I mean, each one separately, or is both okay?
You can take them together if that's the will of the council.
No. We in agreement on that?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Okay, announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department of City Hall as part of its Open Kattati for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sunamcallibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle, N-A-X-L-E, dot com. And the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatacyt.org. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, and I'd like to remind folks that Kattati is hosting our National Night Out on Tuesday, August 2nd, in La Plaza Park. I believe that begins at 6:00 p.m., so hopefully you'll all be able to join us.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Thank you.
And now we're looking for approval of the final agenda, and I would like to move an agenda item for the benefit of a candidate for the library board to, just after our presentation by Supervisor Rabbit, so that agenda item would be regular agenda item 12B, Appointment of Library Commissioner, and put it right after A on the presentations, if the council is okay with that? Thank you, Mr. Varitch.
So, and that would be an action item.
Okay.
And just a couple more things I want to note. You, everyone has an update to item 10A in front of them, and there was a public hearing notice on some amendments to the signed ordinance, but we'll be taking it to the Planning Commission first, so just a note for anyone that might be here for that, that it's been postponed because it's going to the Planning Commission, then it'll come back to council.
On 10A, on the consent?
Correct, yeah, 10A on the consent calendar.
Okay, so that will be taken off the consent calendar?
Yeah, if you want to talk about it, it'll be taken off. Otherwise, it's just noting that there's an update to it.
Ms. Alderman?
Are you having the library commission agenda item before you're having the system placement?
Yes, I am, but I will open it up for public comments since it's an action item. Okay, so right now, we are going to move on to the presentations, and we have a report from our county supervisor, David Rabbit.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I very much appreciate the opportunity again to be in front of you and give you a little update on what's happening at the county, and especially those things that I think interact with your jurisdiction here, and I just want to thank you, before I start, for the opportunity. Also, thank you for the Kids' Day Parade and Nellie the Puppy's sense of regrets, but I think there's only one thing she doesn't like more than parades, and that's council meetings, so apologize about that. I noticed that you have an agenda item of the National League of Cities, and I just wanted to say, last night I got back from the National Association of Counties' annual convention down in Long Beach, and I think, just for the public, and I know that you know this, in Sonoma County, we've really taken advantage of the associations that we belong to, and not only do we gain from them in the experience and the training and the exposure to all these different issues, not reinventing the wheel, I think it also, in terms of leadership, stepping up into those positions, really benefiting the county outright. Several years ago, Supervisor Valerie Brown was president of the National Association and actually ended up bringing back here to Sonoma County some initiatives that really benefited us greatly, including a $3 million grant for health services, really a pilot program. Those kind of things are, I think, are really important to engage in. I could tell you that as I was down in Long Beach, I was on two panels, one on drought response, talking about all the good things that Sonoma County Water Agency is doing, and really innovative things, leaving no good crisis without really taking advantage of the opportunity in front of you. Also talking about the, how our conservation here in Northern California, but specifically Sonoma County, we've been doing that for a long time, for a variety of reasons. We have our fisheries issues that we've been dealing with, the biological opinion, conservation, I don't think is anything new, it wasn't a surprise that we necessarily beat our standards going forward, but also looking at the new and innovative initiatives that really could save water, not only here in Sonoma County, but throughout the West, really excited about those. I was on the panel with Felicia Marcus, the California State Director of Water Board, among others, in Bureau of Reclamation, it was really beneficial. Also tribal issues, I'm always involved in tribal issues at NACO as well as CSAC, and we had a great tribal relationship panel, and we had the director of the BIA on the panel with me, and I took an opportunity to provide some gentle reminders that the county is, county and local governments are part of the solution for those fee-to-trust reforms going forward. Several years ago, former supervisor Mike McGowan of Yellow County, who at the time was CSAC president, was at a White House event, White House Native Affairs, and they said the counties are not on the organizational structure in terms of dealing with tribes, and that raised some eyebrows, but I can say since then, we are, and we are continuing to move in that direction. In fact, we have a bill on the floor of the Senate, hasn't been heard yet, it's an election year, we don't know if it's actually going to get to that point in September, but it would really talk about making sure that local governments are incentivized, and tribes are incentivized to come up with agreements with local governments, to mitigate all the off-site impacts to development on tribal lands. And here in California, what the Rancheria Act does is so much more important probably than anywhere. We have 20% of all the nation tribes, and of course, we have much smaller land reservations, the rancherias, and we're basically on top of one another and immediate neighbors. It's really important that we have those good relationships going forward, so I look forward to that. I also am proud to say that I was elected to the Board of Directors of NACO. California has three representatives, one from San Diego, one from Merced, and now one from Sonoma County, so working forward to that. And actually Greg Cox, supervisor from San Diego County, was elected second vice president, so in two years' time, he'll be president of NACO, and that's a good thing again for California. Also, just want to make mention of CSAC, the California State Association of Counties. I serve as chair of the Housing, Land Use, and Transportation Committee there, as well as co-chair of the Tribal Gaming Workshop, again, on that tribal issues that we've been dealing with, and the importance of those kind of issues in terms of bringing that back and really consolidating support going forward. And actually, within CSAC, we did receive an award this last year for getting all the Northern California counties together to really talk about what is going to happen with medical marijuana, recreational marijuana the next year, working alongside Supervisor Senator Mike McGuire and Assembly Member Jim Wood, and that was the genesis of how that law took place, and so, good work there. But we have a lot more to do on the marijuana front, as we did have a town hall meeting down in Petaluma last week, really kind of going around figuring out what are those things that are important to citizens in terms of regulations that have come down the pike, and it's a whole new world, and we're trying to get out in front of it so that we're not cut flat-footed when it does get approved. It's not just land use, obviously, it's also the health and human services, the law enforcement, the code enforcement, the planning and land use regulations that will follow too, so there's a lot to think about there. I know that you probably are already on top of that, and I applaud you for that. I want to talk briefly about roads too, and the amount of roads that we're paving this summer, I'm fairly excited about this, something we've been working on and trying to get in front of here in the county, and I think I've talked to you before about how many roads we do have. We have a disproportionate amount of roads in Sonoma County, 1,384 miles, and, excuse me, Marin County has 420, Napa 460, and we have 1,884. Big difference. The gas tax formula does not work for our county. Cities are paid per capita, and that's just across the board, and seems to be working, but for counties, it's 75% on population, 25% on lane miles. So a county of our size, with the amount of roads we have versus the population of about half a million, we just don't get as much per lane mile as other counties. In fact, we get about 1/16th as much as some counties, so it really makes a difference. And it goes to show you, we are the first, we are number one out of the 58 counties in general fund expenditures on road pavement in California this last year. And I think I just, I don't know if to be proud of that or to be sad that we actually have to be number one, because I think it really points out the issues with the gas tax formula and the fact that we have to dip into general fund dollars so much to take care of the roads, which are theoretically supposed to be paid for by the gas tax. But we are spending some money, $65 million over four years to pave 292 miles, and I could just tell you, down our way in the second district, that includes, some of these completed to date, I think, are Valley Ford, Chalena Valley, Old Redwood Highway, which I think you already know, Stony Point, Meacham, Petaluma Hill Road, Main Street in Pen Grove, and Corona. This year, you'll see Bodega, Skilman, Liberty, Pepper, Freitas, Eli, Corona, Rona Park Expressway. Next year, you'll see Lakeville, Adobe, Petaluma Boulevard North, East Railroad, West Sierra, Poplar, and Petaluma Hill Road, and you'll also see Cannon Lane down off of Lakeville. The important thing there is that'll allow us to get Tole Park open sooner than later. As you know, we need to have that entry paved before we do that going forward, so excited about that. I think also the freeway work, and I know that you've seen some of that, and certainly Councilmember Landman on the SETA, the earmark proportionment and trying to get those dollars, we haven't necessarily, we don't have the check in hand, but we're cautiously optimistic that we'll prevail and receive that $15 million to go against the $16 million that we already have to get that one piece of the Narrows complete to open up about five miles of HOV lanes, so that's looking good at this point in time. Certainly smart, the crossings, quiet zones, and safety, the utmost important as we get together or get closer to the fact that trains will be running at regular intervals here. We've been putting some money into Pen Grove and making sure that the crossing in downtown Pen Grove is as safe as possible through the county, pedestrian crossings as well, fencing, really going around and trying to find, make sure that we're, we have everything buttoned up before the trains are running full speed and every 15 minutes during commute hours. Ballot measures going forward, I think you probably already know some of these, but I just want to touch on a few. We did the transient occupancy tax for the unincorporated area, we did move that forward to raise it from 9% to 12%, and put that on the ballot, and we, hopefully, we can get everyone's support for that moving forward. As you know, the week before, it was timely because we had a winery event meeting and really talked about the impacts of tourism here in Sonoma County, and we are blessed to have this problem, it's really a first-world problem, I think, that we are so populated, so many people want to come here, to be in a wonderful place, to spend their time, energy, money, but we also have the impacts that they bring, as I think John well knows, out at the coast, and some of those impacts in the county areas are not necessarily supported by the local economy. Bodega Fire, for instance, we've been putting extra dollars into Bodega Fire over the course of time, during the week or during the off-season, maybe 10,000 people support the district out there, and obviously, on a warm summer day, that can grow by tenfold or more, so it's really important that we make sure that we can do everything possible to really provide the experience that the tourists want when they come here, but also make sure that everyone is safe, and that it's really proportional to the residents of Sonoma County. Community separators, I think you know that's going on the ballot as well, we had the first hearing on that, there was a lot of questions about some of the, not so much the areas, although a little bit on that, more so on the, kind of the nuances within that, what was allowed, what the consequences of that would mean, there was a great concern, I think there's a push and understanding on the housing issue and the farmworker housing issue, whether or not that could be allowed going forward. A lot of it had to do with the process of how that would take place, because the first development would entitle or would entail you to grant a conservation easement elsewhere, but if you really wanted to put the housing in and perhaps a second development, things like that, to really make sure that we understood fully the consequences of that, and the wording was correct, and we had a pretty good meeting on that, and I think it's coming back to us on the second. I'll go with the second, it may be the night, though. But time is of the essence there going forward, to make sure that we get it on the ballot, as you know, 90 days prior. The early childhood education that was talked about earlier in the year, I think they're waiting, and they're probably going to go in 18, they're trying to figure out, and looking at Marin County, that has a tax measure on the ballot going forward, and certainly, you know, the library has put their own eight-cent measure going forward. Parks did, we did put a parks measure on, and I could tell you, it was a difficult decision for me personally, not because I don't support parks, I totally do, this is a half-cent sales tax in the unincorporated area only, you know, and it just creates some issues in terms of the value added for that particular tax, and how we go about selling that, and why only the unincorporated area versus the cities, and, but I do, I will say, obviously, I think we've added a lot of acreage in parks. Carol Hart has been a wonderful regional parks director, she is a champion. We're kind of changing the dynamics of parks, looking at parks more holistically, all parks together. I don't know if necessarily if people, certainly Councilmember DeLasso knows, if people really recognize whether it's a state park or regional park, national park, I mean, it's open space, it's land, it's out to get on, so, but we do have more parks than we once did, we need to make sure that we have the O and M, the operations, maintenance to go forward, and making sure that we're not having deferred maintenance, and providing, again, the experience should be as positive as possible. So those kind of things that we're looking for on the ballot measures going forward. I just wanted to make one brief mention, or a couple, the Rancho, the casino encroachment fee, I keep in touch with Frank Chief Trainer, he is at my door often, making sure that we're moving forward, and we are, and I think that was one of the reasons why we got the stations, all stations to open going forward. I think the, you know, I'm on the ad hoc for fire services here in the county, and we have 41 separate entities that provide fire services in Sonoma County. Actually, I would say we've gotten away very cheaply over the years, we still have 15 volunteer companies. Things have changed, certainly demographics have changed, it's no longer, will someone get off their plow and go fight the fire, even firefighting has changed in terms of the standards, as Councilmember Landman knows. So over the course of time, I think the county has been putting more and more resources towards fire services and bringing everyone up to a level, and making sure they're equipped, and their, the apparatus can be housed in a decent place, and so on and so forth, but, you know, we are still struggling to find a steady source of income. I will tell you that the Prop 172 funds, Public Safety Funds, having, once they came back and reached where they were prior to OA, the sheriff and the DA agreed that that would be a cap for them, and the remainder of growth would go to fire services, so that'll be a source of funds, a small increment year over year that can be used for that way, and I think that is a good thing. We did have, like I said, the marijuana town hall, we do have a Sustainable Groundwater Management Town Hall meeting coming up down in Petaluma, and I know we're on the border of those districts. I can also tell you, I'm a member of the State Seismic Safety Commission, and I tell you, in September, the State Seismic Safety Commission is going to meet here in Sonoma County, trying to figure out what to do with them, but you are more than welcome, it's a two-day event, usually the day before is a field trip somewhere, to check things out, and then the board meeting, and I've been on that board for the past, maybe, two years now, and I can tell you, it's always fascinating to me as an architect, and I'm there as a local government representative, but really, a great commission, very bright individuals, PhDs, and of your scientists types, the engineers types, and really not talking always about preparation for earthquake, and, you know, mitigating damages, but really talking about recovery and what you do afterwards, which is almost more important in this state than the latter, so look for that in September, excited about that. And lastly, I would just say that the Sonoma Fair has started, and I hope to see you all up there, I know it runs through August 7th, closed Mondays, but the fair in Sonoma County has always been a great, great event, really goes back to our agricultural roots, and I think we're on, what, 77, 78, something like that, which is really quite amazing. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and again, I thank you for the opportunity to come here today and to give you a brief update on some of the things that are happening around the county.
Thank you, Supervisor Rabbit. Any questions from the conference?
Sure. Great, thank you for the report, appreciate that. I have a question regarding the Smart Rail and the, I don't know what to call them, but the curbs that are right near the tracks, most of them, well, all of them, I'm sure, are painted yellow, and so they stand out really well, and there's one that goes on, I guess that would be sort of Eli, behind the Palace of Fruit, and it's black from the number of tires that have hit it, and I'm just a little concerned, not so much about that one, but it just made me think of others, and has that issue been brought to your guys' attention? I can tell by the smile, it's a yes, but I'm just, yeah, I'm just kind of curious kind of where that's going, because it's, that's an issue that would be rail-wise, so not just even in the...
Yeah, I know, and it is up and down the rail, and it is a very frustrating issue. You know, CPUC regulates all rail crossings, at great rail crossings, and they really set the standards. Now, of course, I will contend that the smart engineers, the crossing engineers will make the, will submit what they want approved, and also, I will also say that our system is set up for quiet zones.
Right.
Although I will also tell you that, while originally, I was told that the curbs were supplemental safety devices in order to satisfy the quiet zones, that when we went to take them out in Pen Grove, we weren't allowed to, and we had to go back and get that, you know, talk to the CPUC again, and I think they, they of course think, they're there to keep cars from going around the tracks, and in Pen Grove, what we're doing, downtown Pen Grove, where it was, I believe it was a bigger problem, because you have a track crossing that is a very acute angle, right by a T-intersection of Woodward coming down the hill, it's just a very, very unique situation. We had rollover curbs temporarily put in, we're going to take those out once we do what they call exit arms, or crossing arms at the backside of the gate, so that you can't really drive around, because there's another arm to block your way. Of course, those are more expensive, and most of the rail crossings don't have exit arms, they only have the arms coming down on the face side of the traffic, and that's part of the issue as well. Once Smart installs those, the county has the lovely obligation of taking them over. I've talked to Susan Clausen, the Sonoma County Transportation Public Works Director, I know that the one on Eli, for instance, can also get some low ground fog in the winter months, and we need taller candlesticks or the reflectors to make sure it's safe, we need to make sure the curbs are pre-painted. We talked about putting the rollover curbs in front of those, ideally, we would like to shorten the length, but the lengths are determined by the CPUC and having to go through that process. It is an issue that we've been trying to find solutions to, you have a state regulatory agency, you have railroad law, which has been around since Stanford and Crocker and all his friends, and it's been very, very difficult and frustrating to work through, but I do appreciate that, and we need to make sure that we do better, so that cars don't hit it.
Yeah, and I wasn't really looking for an answer, I just, and I knew that it was an issue, and it's been brought to everybody's attention, but, I mean, it sounds like you're, you know, you're looking at different options, so I think that's certainly the best you can do at this point, so I thank you for that.
Yeah, and, you know, again, number one thing is safety, and I think that there's a, there is a gradation of safety measures for crossings, you know, the safest crossing is grade separation, obviously, that's not going to happen, but, you know, you go from there and you try to build in what you can, so I think we, I think it's, quite frankly, a lesson as, or a learning process as we go on, a little iterative, and figuring out how we can make sure that we really do have the safest crossings for all the citizens, both on the train and vehicles.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember...
No questions, but thank you very much for your time and coming here tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions tonight, I think you've covered everything very well, but a couple of things I did want to point out in greater detail, I want to give you a lot of credit for something that was reported in the news, but that is a big deal, certainly for everyone in this county, and probably everyone in this room. I know I commuted to Nevada for about 30 years, so it mattered to me, and I'm talking about your work in trying to ensure that an important source of revenue went to resolving, or hopefully resolving, that issue with Narrows, as opposed to perhaps other good but less important potential outcomes. I think this is the most good for the most people, and I know, it was obvious to me, at least watching from the outside, that you were working very hard on that, so credit was where credit is due, that's a big thing, and I think everybody thanks you for that.
Appreciate that.
And I just wanted, I'm glad you mentioned the part of what the county is doing for the fire districts, because I think that's important too. The fire districts have had a real brutal 10 years, that's not lost in anybody, everybody in governance has. I know it hasn't been all cake for the counties either, and I recognize that, and I think that's why it's even more important, the extra work you guys are going through to try and find a way to make this work regionally, particularly with the size of the interest group you're working with. How big is the committee?
Oh, that committee, yeah, 70-some-odd folks were on that particular, and I got to give great credit to now-retired Assistant County Administrator Chris Thomas, who did such a great job about bringing them together, he had the institutional memory and the knowledge and the respect of all the fire service, so that worked out really well.
That's very impressive. Anytime you can get a committee of 70 people and get something done, that's a good thing, and I think it's important. I mean, RFD deserves and could use the help, the station openings are real crucial, but beyond that, it's always struck me that RFD was formed very prudently, as we should be, right at the height of a boom time, and then immediately sends in times haven't been as good, so they've always been kind of forced into this belt-tightening mode, so I hope in this realignment of looking at things, it helps resolve that, so I want to thank you and everybody on the Board of Fire and the county for your work on this.
No, thank you very much. I think on the transportation front, I mean, and really across the board, it really points out that the needs outpace the resources, and that the decisions become very difficult, not that Marin, the transit center didn't need additional dollars, they did, but the three-and-a-half million dollars or so that is allocated, or hopefully will be allocated down that way, will take care of the immediate need. The long-term need down there is about $40 million or so, I'm told, so the additional dollars sitting, waiting for other dollars to be leveraged, while 100,000 people wait in the traffic, did not make sense to me, and I very much appreciate all the support I got on that. And you're absolutely right about the fire departments across, and again, we know, we're ramping up as we go. I think we're also trying to be respectful of all those communities that love their volunteer fire departments, that love their local control of that, and really have a mechanism in place to really support that, support them, and to really provide the resources they need, and an equal level of training, which I think is important as well, which I think they have been doing, and really appreciate.
No, it's true, one size doesn't fit all, and a county as wide and diverse as ours, and it's important you recognize that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, Supervisor Rabbit, can you share with us a little bit about what's going on with affordable housing? I know you guys are doing some low creative things there.
We are, and I appreciate that, that's been a huge... We are, and appreciate that, that's been a huge issue, certainly on the homeless side, you know, something that we've been battling and putting a lot of resources in, I know that we all have within the county, trying to find that, you know, trying to alleviate what we can, and one time we thought through the Veterans Administration that we had a path forward, that we can really leverage those dollars further. We've had some successes, and, you know, some not-so-great frustrations going forward. The Palms Inn, that Supervisor Zane really championed, I think is really a great model, taking a kind of dilapidated, underused motel like that to be able to find a place for veterans as well as those most critical, to get them into some transitional housing at least. It is, again, one that is so difficult post-redevelopment to find the dollars to make, you know, a number of housing units needed going forward. We've had the small house or the tiny house, you know, we're moving forward with that pilot program, you know, it's difficult, because you, what sounds like a great idea and should be, it should be, a lower cost ends up being a cost per person a little higher than what the alternatives are, and do you still go there when you're leaving someone out in the street, and how do you balance that going forward? I know that this last year, for the, one of the rare times, and it was actually, I suggested it, we backfilled the state program that was underfunding COTS and Catholic Charities on the homeless side, the emergency solutions grants, which they, and part of the problem was they went from a competitive grant cycle to a per capita. There was places that were not competitive, I would say they weren't competitive for a reason, and other places like Sonoma County that were very competitive, they were competitive because they had data-driven, you know, results-driven, excellent, COTS and Catholic charities both doing great work, but when they switched to that other model, COTS was losing, the first year 60% of their dollars, and the second year 80% of their dollars. This on top of the city kind of weaning them off of dollars over the course of time, and kind of put the crunch on, especially COTS, and so we came through with about an $800,000 infusion this year. But it can only be a one-time, you know, the dollars, it's really, something's got to change going forward. And again, Senator McGuire is working on that one, trying to go back. The problem there is, it's all political, unfortunately, there were winners and losers, but there are more winners, smaller counties, more legislators are going to be happy about the change than not. We were the ones that really got hit the hardest on that, and it's hard to convince others to vote against their self-interest on that. So that's a little bit of a challenge, but we've really been trying to do much more, you know, around the county now, and I think as we go forward, we can also, and granted with our, the federal dollars are limited in spending it within our jurisdictions, we have three within the county, right, you have Petaluma, Santa Rosa, and the county, all having to spend within their own jurisdictions, but I personally believe, especially on the county side, outside of certain areas, more urbanized areas, maybe the springs, the river, Arcfield, really outside of that, the housing does belong within the urban cores, that's where the services are, that's where the transportation is, that's really, I think, what we all want within the county. So finding a way that we can share those resources and not violate federal housing allocation, you know, laws going forward, I think is important, but we've been talking about that as well. Because I know the city of Petaluma, for instance, and I'm sure the city of Cotati could use a partner in trying to find solutions here locally and really leverage those dollars, because that's really the way, the only way you can make it happen. Besides that, we've taken up, we put extra money, that's something that I proposed at budget time, into legal aid for substandard housing. It came a few instances, one in Petaluma, where some families got evicted after, you know, one was there for 40 years, and after a new buyer came in, and trying to find, really trying to buy time and talking to the Realtors Association, what we can do on those kind of instances, and really going after the scaff laws who kind of violate things and make things worse for, for everyone. There was common agreement that that would be a good way to go, so we're financing another attorney within that office and trying to expand the services to the springs and to other areas, this year I think especially, they're awfully busy because of the way that the markets have gone. So that's what we're doing at the county in terms of some of the things on housing.
Thank you for sharing that, and thank you for your presentation.
Sorry for my long answer.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Supervisor Rabbit, thank you very much, it was a very comprehensive report, a lot of information, and I really appreciate you coming down and updating us, and thanks very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, I really do appreciate it. Thank you all again, and I will see you next time, if not before.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If you have any comments, you can ask me. It's a conversation. Can we talk offline now? We, that, we're asking, like, if we did talk about paratransit. Well, there was a, one of the smart, um, question. Okay, please, I'll, if we can talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we are going to move to our moot agenda item, which is on the regular agenda item, which will be, and... Mr. Obed.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. So, this item is regarding the appointment of the Library Commissioner, and the Library Commission provides governance for the Sonoma County library system, and that includes establishing policies, setting goals, objectives, hiring and evaluating the library director, establishing and monitoring the annual budget, contracts, and other powers consistent with the law to foster effective use of the library system and management of the library system. So back in July of 2014, the council considered applications for appointment to the Sonoma County Library Commission, and ultimately appointed Hillary Smith to serve this first two-year term at the pleasure of the council. And this term expires in August, so because of that, we, the city had advertised over a two-week period in the community voice, on the marquee, and in the city's website, advertised for applications for this commission appointment. Application packets were also provided at City Hall, and as a result, we received one application from Hillary Smith, who's the currently appointed commissioner, which is also included in the council packet tonight. And just as a reminder, Sonoma County residents is required for this appointment, and it's generally, preference is generally given to applicants who reside within the Cotati city limits. Hillary Smith, the applicant you have in your packet, of course, meets both criteria. And this term is for four years, and is again at the pleasure of the council. And the seat is filled through appointment by the mayor, and then it's ratified by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. And with that in mind, are there any questions? Okay, and I will, if it's appropriate protocol, open this up to the public for public comment, if anyone wishes to address a public comment on the Library Commission appointment. Mr. Berich.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the benefit of the audience, my name is George Berich, I'm a former Cotati City Council member here. I just don't want the council giving this type of impression to the, to the public that this is some type of an open, fair system in appointing. I'd like to congratulate the woman tonight for coming forward, but, you know, I kind of feel that, you know, the system is rigged, and the council, you know, unless you are in good with the council, you're not going to get appointed to anything. I mean, I was told, you know, behind the scenes years ago, don't even bother applying for the planning commission, don't even bother applying for the library commission spot. You don't have a chance in hell, George. And, and I think they're right, I think people who know the inside of the city well, as I do, know that you have to be connected somehow, you have to be a party player, you got to be a team player, you can't criticize city government or any of the city council members too harshly, or you're not going to go anywhere in this town. So, you know, that, people need to know that that's just how this city works, many cities work the same way. The system's rigged, you're either an insider or you're an outsider, you're either a party player or an agitator. And I want to congratulate the woman who did sign up tonight to go forward, but let's not fool anybody how this process works. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address this particular accent? Hillary, I was going to invite you up anyway, but come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Library Commission. When I was appointed two years ago, Councilmember DeLasso cautioned me about the time commitment, and I kind of blithely said, "Sure." He was right. I found the time on the Library Commission to be both challenging and rewarding. As you all know, we're operating under a new JPA, which has greatly expanded the number of commissioners on the council, and so the past two years have been a time of redefining priorities and goals. Going forward, we have quite a bit of work to do, including restoring and expanding library hours, doing some much-needed facilities and infrastructure upgrades, and ensuring, among other things, that our new Roseland branch becomes a permanent member of the library system. Of course, this needs to be done by securing funding, and I'm sure you're aware that at our last meeting, the Library Commission voted to place a measure on the ballot, bringing the issue of a sales tax before the voters. So, I think that there's quite a bit of work for me still to do, I'm just sort of getting my feet under me after two years, and I look forward to continuing that work in this next appointment, if you choose to appoint me, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions from the council? Thank you so much. Seeing no one else wanting to address the city council, I'm going to close the public comment on this and bring it back to the council. Having been the liaison for the library for every period of time, and having seen the amount of work involved, the commitment and the dedication, the knowledge, all of those things that make for an excellent commissioner, I would be honored to nominate you for the Library Commission for the Cotati representative.
With that, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to move approval of the mayor's nomination by the rest of the council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that shows a five-year vote. And for the record, I would like to indicate again, as Mr. Obed stated in his opening comments, the commission appointment was advertised throughout the city, on the website, on the board, so it's available to anyone who would like to apply. Thank you, Ms. Smith, I appreciate your service. Okay, now we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on a consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to Cotati, pursuant to city council policy, 2016-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on a consent calendar. So with that, I will open up the citizens' business, and we have a speaker card from Allison Swatz.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank Mr. Obed for a response, he got three emails, there are three or six, three out of six of us from El Rancho Drive here. I want to thank the chief of the police for being here, if it wasn't for the police department, we wouldn't still be there, personally. I want to make it brief, I know I don't have a lot of time, we're kind of at a desperate measure here. We always loved Cotati, we've been here 13 years, a lot of people have been 30 years, a few years surrounding one residence on El Rancho Drive. I've been told in the last year, the cops have been there 180 times, in the last two years, probably double that, probably more. I've been one of the top callers, but I've not been the only one. Some of the problems are drug abuse, meth in particular, domestic violence, property damage, trespassing, disturbing the peace day and night, mental illness, prostitution theft, health and safety issues. We're desperate, I don't want to live here anymore, and that's pretty sad. We are at a point now where we don't feel safe, we don't feel secure, always looking out the window, we go out the door, I called the police before I even came to this meeting. So it's, we're at a point now where we just need some advice, I realize, you know, we're just here to express our voice right now. Three more of us would have been here, but we're desperate, it's ridiculous, the police department has a lot better things to do than to come to one residence on one street, which is ridiculous. It's a lovely community, we always loved the fact that Cotati was different, small, loved that, but in 13 years, the last two years, I have never, I don't want to be here anymore, it's that bad. Now, I am a renter, and my landlord knows, a couple of people own their homes, they've been here 30 years. One resident is, doesn't feel safe anymore, a lot of us don't feel the same, and this is where we're at. So we've gotten some advice, we know legally what to do, sometimes the hands are tied, sometimes there are things you can do, we know who owns the place, we know that there's a bunch of people that live there that don't belong there, so that's how the problems kind of increase at this point. There are a lot of violations on this property, I am sure, safety and health issues. A couple of bad instances, I don't have much time, one person said on the other, now this is hearsay for me, somebody broke into a residence twice and threatened the person living there. I see on a regular basis, one of the people there, either he's high, he starts throwing furniture out the window, out the front, on the lawn, people walking by with their kids and their dogs do not feel safe. It's ridiculous, and it's just, you walk down and everybody's like, what is going on over here, it's ridiculous. And then you've got a new park going in at the end of the street, that's going to affect it, I know, and there's a school down the end of the street, I have two little boys that live next door to me, it's insane, it's a daily thing right now, I'm telling you, we're pretty desperate, so that's pretty much, we wanted our voice to be heard, it was very important, we've been suffering for this for two years solid, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Swatz, I have a quick question for you, just for the record, I don't know that I heard the address on El Rancho that you were referring to.
It's the 8165 address, El Rancho Drive, the police department know very well what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
I don't know what I'm supposed to say.
No, that's fine.
Trying to be legal, you know, protecting, I don't know why, but anyway, you're welcome.
Thank you for taking the time and letting us know. Anyone else like to address citizens' business? Ms. Alderman.
Could I do the consent calendar first?
That's true.
Okay. There's two things on the consent calendar that upset me. One, mostly with the Cotadian Orde, Accordian Festival, you're not waiving the $15 fee for, when in the prior years, you've always done it, there shouldn't be a fundraiser for this city, it should be for the youth that the, that goes to, and I don't understand why you have on the other one, with the records retention of the videos and all that, why you cannot take it off the city computer, double, there's lots of ways in why three years is not enough to retain records from what I read. Okay, that's the end of...
Mr. Citizens' Business. For clarification, Ms. Alderman, when you were talking about the $15, were you talking about the vendor application fee?
Yes.
For all of the vendors that participate in reporting this?
Right, and it said that the, it wasn't being waived, and that in previous years, the member, the Accordian Festival had paid the vendor, the city...
For those vendors that may not have paid that fee.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ready. Citizens' comment. You all on the council have had a banner month disobeying the law, let me summarize. You are all, you all passed the minutes of the May 31st, when you all insisted it wasn't a council meeting and wasn't subject to the Brown Act, there was no webcast, a clerk was not present, notes were not taken, a roll call did not happen, and the city attorney was not there. Now you want to have, you did the minutes so that, because you had a decision for the block Avenue Development. If you remember, you all sat at tables facing each other with a staff while the two citizens, two, sorry, I'm having trouble tonight, two citizens there, one of them who was me, were regulated to cross the room looking at your backsides. You all made decisions such as the West Cotati Avenue You all made decisions such as the West Cattati Avenue property that would be an agenda items. You don't think you have broken the Brown Act numerous ways with this action? Think again as your actions or this wouldn't last a moment in court legally. The next one. The Village Walk project gets a pass to construction when the staff and the council had connections with the developer, with the Sonoma County Water Agency, which forms Sonoma Clean Power. There's a direct connection. How many of you reclusive yourselves for conflict of interest? Zero. They were digging on Friday. Was there a permit? No. Do you need 10 days' notice? Yes. Was it done? Was there any sign? No. And then to my understanding, they put up the more frames over the weekend. You're not allowed to do construction on the weekends according to city code and the California Business, I'm sorry, Building Code. You, worst of all is that you put on this, this, all of this on the consent agenda on May 10th and the sale was not even recorded until May 22nd on the county recorder's office, almost two weeks after the item was passed by the council. It's, this is shameful behavior. You, okay, you closed off most of downtown Old Redwood Highway for the downtown improvement project until October. There was never any mention of the possibility ever in these chambers. There are so many other projects going on. Repeatedly, especially as I did, bring up that there was inadequate planning of the timing of these projects. Did you listen to me? No. George's use as a projector was denied tonight when it was specifically outlined in the League of California Cities Open and Public Document. Tammy Taylor gave a presentation on this document earlier this year. I'm the one that had to point out that it was against the Brown Act to deny use of the overhead projector. As usual, this is not an open forum with a level playing field. You stack the cards in your favor. Shame on you. Lastly, you are not doing enough supervision of building codes is, in that I had to use my walker in the bicycle lane to be able to use the crosswalk by Walgreens. No reply to my email, as you usually do. You have to ensure accessibility to the crosswalks even during construction according to the California Building Codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, council, for giving Ms. Alderman a little more time. That's very gracious. I'd like to welcome the folks here in the room tonight and the people watching at home who want to welcome you to this meeting. This is the people's house. It's a people's house where nobody has to thank anybody for the time to speak before, before the council. Now, folks, if you like, if you think the Democratic Convention is rigged, welcome to Cattati City Hall. It's totally rigged here, totally rigged. The repeated Brown Act violations by this council dictates that these chambers are clearly now a crime scene. The council is running a criminal enterprise and Ms. Alderman is completely 100% correct. To add, let's talk about Mr. Landman. Mr. Landman's resume now includes that he's a peeping tom. He's been taking photos over my fence, trespassing onto my property. I've complained to the police and the police chief won't do a damn thing about it because I guess he fears his position with this city. The only thing I can surmise, Mr. Landman, you need to turn yourself in, submit all the photographs that you've been taking of our property and my property, and submit a full confession to the city and the city chief, the city police chief. I have witnesses standing by, willing to cooperate with the city in this investigation, but the Cattati Police Department and their officer who took my complaint won't investigate and won't file a complaint. I have it all recorded, in case you need to listen to it. This place has become nothing less than a hall of shame. Ms. Kilman, Ms. Kilman refuses to read the court judgment that I received against the city of Cattati from a federal judge. She just ignores it, calls herself an attorney. The mayor here has sworn to run me out of town for criticizing his incompetent wife who served as mayor, which was one of the low points in this town's history. I was given a copy of this letter addressed to the police chief and all of you from the Cattati Police Officers Association stating a clear complaint against Officer Chris Calpa. It goes on in huge detail, from sexual harassment to incompetency, bad training, aggressive and emotional-driven behavior. This thing's a work of art. I was sent this months ago. We haven't heard anything about this. The complete police department, I'd like to put this on the board up here tonight for anybody to read, including the press, if he's interested in such a story. I'd like to hear your response to this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett? That's a public board, city property?
Yes.
That's not a bulletin board.
It is now, sir.
It's not, Mr. Barrett. Don't put that on there.
It must be an election year.
Anyone else want to address citizens' business? Mr. Kirkman?
I apologize, this may be a little trivial in nature, but coming in this evening, folks, we're actually coming from El Rancho just coincidentally, a couple youngsters on bicycles. They were on the new path and when they reached the yellow barricade on this end, they simply rode right through it and knocked it over. It's reminiscent of many years ago, my former neighbor who happens to be blind was literally upside down in a ditch because it had yellow tape around it. Yellow tape isn't of much value to somebody with a cane because the cane goes through, they fall, and the yellow tape goes right down with them. If you want to have a barricade, you might put in a real barricade if there's a need. If there's not, there's no reason to have yellow tape because people think it's wide open. In terms of yellow tape and other things, there are a number of A-frames around the community now that get put up on the sidewalk and get put back down and signs are turned around. It becomes confusing. Many people were discussing today the confusion of some work that should be done professionally. Some months ago, I came before you because the center of town happens to have a bank. Somebody had decorated it with human waste. It is again decorated. There were three filing cabinets on the city sidewalk. They have since disappeared after three weeks' time. We really should be able to take care of the downtown and staff saying they're too busy to get down there really isn't competent. It would be good to keep our downtown together. Recently, I read Mr. Williams' article regarding Ronard Park and State Farm. State Farm's behind a fence, it's somewhat controlled, it's somewhat newer than the bank building, and certainly isn't in the center of their town. I would think if your neighboring city can abate property that's been abandoned and isn't maintained, that you could perhaps do the same thing here. It would be nice to abate the largest parking lot in town and the largest building in the center of the city that's being used as a decorative form for people to defecate and purge their stomachs. So it would be nice to keep on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address citizens' business? Seeing none on close, citizens' business. Any comments? Mr. Landman? Councilmember Landman?
Right, let's see, a couple of things. It was a lot of citizens' business. I want to make sure I don't miss anything here. First of all, if particularly, if I got the name wrong, was it Ms. Spotts?
That's what I had.
Okay. I believe you.
Swatz.
Spotts, thank you. I believe, Staff, you were copied and emailed, you're working with these property owners because it sounds like there's multiple concerns that encompass both safety and health as well as potentially law enforcement issues. So it looks like it's something that's kind of within our region to try and see what can be resolved, look into. So thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that connection had happened. Secondly, let's see, coming down to yellow tape being an ineffective barricade, that's a very good point, actually, and it's maybe a good thing to keep in mind. Now, I know that path had hardened up and perhaps the yellow tape was just decorative at that point, and I know that kids, they'll ride right through it. Even if you put a real barricade up, they might just go around it. But I think for some areas where it is potentially something that could be a tripping hazard or something, that's a good suggestion maybe to keep in mind for the future. And I think that's all I had for that. If we could just keep the council up to date to the degree that's legally correct on what, how this issue resolves for the Spotts family and for that neighborhood, I'd be curious to see how that goes. Thank you.
Councilmember Landman, Swatz, S.W.A.T.G.S. Ms. Mayor Harvey?
Yes, I was wondering if the city manager couldn't address some of the concerns, in particular about the meeting on May 31st. There was two aspects to that meeting and I don't, and maybe it's the city attorney. I don't believe that there is a requirement for webcasting and for the city clerk to be there. And the minutes that were produced was to the item that was about the Blodgett Avenue condominium, the splitting there. And then the other part was a budget study session. And as I recall, yes, there were citizens there and the mayor opened it up multiple times so that citizens' concern could be addressed because I believe Ms. Alderman arrived late and so she didn't get to address at the beginning of the meeting and he opened that up for her. So can you address the Brown Act in that meeting? It was properly noticed and I believe we're not required to have a webcast or a clerk or any of those items?
Yeah, that's right. It was a study session. It was properly noticed in accordance to the Brown Act. I took the minutes at that meeting, that's why you have minutes in your packet. There, you are correct, there was one item on there, which was the Blodgett Street waiving of the need to approve the final map. And it was a special meeting because it was a study session, so as is typical form, public comment occurs at the start of the meeting. You do correctly recall that the mayor reopened public comment later in the meeting to accommodate some attendees that arrived late at that meeting.
And then on the Village Walk, the framing or the digging, the grading, as I understand it, was completed by the previous owner and that item was taken care of and what's happening right now, from what I can tell, is really foundations and framing. And that is not grading, it's a very different thing, correct?
The prior owner was the one that was issued the grading permit. They graded the site and put in all the site utilities and the flatwork. And so what was issued to the new owner is a building permit. That's to build the home foundations and build the vertical structures. So that's, and this project was approved a long time ago. The item that the council considered was just merely a transfer of the subdivision improvement agreement from the prior owner to the new owner. Pretty perfunctory. And it had gone, as you probably recall, I think this project started processing in 2004, and it had been through numerous, you know, DRC, Planning Commission, council meetings, and back when they changed some things. So it had been reviewed extensively in the public.
And the, my recollection is that when the new owners took this over, they really took over what was already been approved. They did not ask for any changes. So there was no need for them to come back through any process because they accepted what was previously approved.
Yeah, they bought the subdivision with the approvals on it and that's exact, and they're building the approved, what was approved by the council and planning commission. And the approvals were still valid on the property when they bought the property.
Okay. Do we, can you speak to the weekend construction work? Was there weekend construction work? Is there, can you?
I would have to ask around. I'm not aware of any weekend construction work. I know that they, that they did some preliminary work last week and this week they're framing up some foundations.
Oops, I see our planning director moving over.
Okay, yeah, maybe Vicki can add a little bit to that.
Thank you.
I will say that they came in on Monday and asked what it would take to get approval to work on the weekend, so they didn't tell us that they worked over the weekend, but I wouldn't be surprised after hearing the comments that maybe they did start doing some work, but they realized when they coordinated with their own office that that's not allowed. So we may see that aspect of the project come back to the planning commission and ask for that approval. And I would also add, just for the public's knowledge, that there is a 50 cubic yard threshold for requiring a grading permit. So just because someone has a building permit doesn't mean that they may not be moving earth. They're just not going to do 50 cubic yards worth of movement.
And that would require a grading permit?
Correct.
So it's a, it's an amount threshold?
It's an amount threshold and they pulled that permit for the previous true grading that they did. Right now, what they're doing is what you might call fine grading or preparing the pad, the foundation work. So folks will see some earth movement out there, but it's under the threshold.
Okay. Thank you. Then I understand that the downtown is being worked on and I understand that yesterday was the first day and there was a little bit of hiccups there. Can you speak to what we've spoken to the contractor about to make that a little bit better?
Yeah, the first day of actual construction was today and the contractor got a little overzealous with the signs this morning. And so we quickly contacted the contractor and we addressed a lot of that before noon today. And there's going to be some additional signage tomorrow to address some other deficiencies that the contractor, this is the first day of work, it's not unusual to have signage modifications once it actually shows up in the field. And I will say that this morning it was, in my experience, an unusual amount of signage that shouldn't normally go in place. And so, you know, we've talked to the contractor about the signage issue, the directional issues, about how they actually are closing the road down, you know, that they close it in sections so that they can more efficiently prosecute the work and minimize the disruption to the businesses. And we also talked to some of the businesses today, too, and worked through some of those things as well.
Okay. And then lastly, can you speak a little bit to the problems with the accessibility to crosswalks down by Walgreens? A little bit?
I'm not fully familiar with the situation, so Craig can respond to that.
Thank you. And if you're not familiar and we have to look into it, that's fine. Maybe just someone could address that.
Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, fellow works director. That area is the north pedestrian plaza and it is closed due to the construction with the, you know, sidewalk open on the west side of Old Redwood Highway. And so being dropped off there by the bus near that shopping center there, it's perfectly adequate to go walking in and do shopping in that shopping center, but to then go from there across the street to Walgreens, that would not be the place to take the stop. It would be, the recommendation would be to take the following stop and then backtrack along Old Redwood Highway and cross where the crosswalk and the sidewalk is open. So during certain phases of construction, for example, when we were working on one side of Old Redwood Highway, we closed that sidewalk and provided avenues for pedestrians to walk on the other side. And then that was finished and now we're on the east side and there's provisions to, for pedestrians to walk on the sidewalk and use it on the east, on the west side. So there are ways around it. it, and it is confusing admittedly, but the recommendation here would be to just, if you want to get to Walgreens, don't get off at that stop, get off on the next stop, backtrack, cross where it's safe.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Smith?
No, he's powered.
I think almost all the questions were covered. I think it is extremely inconvenient sometimes when you have to build something, and you have to go around, and sometimes it's difficult, but in the end, it's going to be a much more enticing, inviting, pleasant-looking project. So, okay. With that, we will move on to direction on future agenda items. Any suggestions at this point?
Not tonight.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the consent calendar, and we have an update to the consent calendar, 10A. And do we have a motion on that?
I'd like to move approval, including that update, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Go ahead.
So we have a motion in two seconds.
Take it.
Be tied for a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let this show as a five-oh vote. Now we move on to the public hearings and establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and levying of assessments for fiscal year 2015, 2016. I believe Mr. Scott is going to present that?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, once again, Public Works Director, city engineer. This item is regarding the outstanding backflow testing charges, and this is a fairly routine matter. Every year, we have a number of properties that are delinquent on their backflow testing charges. Back on June 14th, 2016, council set up a public hearing date for today on these assessments. So council is to hold a public hearing, and after the public hearing is to consider adopting the attached resolution, which would assess these nine properties for the outstanding backflow testing charges. With that, happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you received any protests at this point?
I have not. We have not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lambo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick questions for you, Mr. Scott. First of all, so some city owners take care of this testing themselves, others rely on the city to conduct the testing, and after that, the city bills them for that service, most pay. Can you give me a rough idea of the proportion of that group that depend on the city to conduct the testing that ultimately wind up delinquent? I think we got about nine properties this year. Typically, what's the rough proportion of that? Is it relatively small?
I think the number of backflow devices we have in the city, and every single one of them has to be tested each year. I don't have a really good handle about how many, but there, it's probably 200 or 300 backflow devices, so this would be, you know, in a single percentage, you know?
That's what I wanted to hear. I suspected that was it, but I just wanted to actually hear somebody that knew a little more about it confirm that. Let me ask you just one more question, too. So with that, because some have not been responsive to the request of payment, we then have to levy these, levy these process, these properties. I'm curious, is it just a flat pass-through cost for the cost of the service, or is there any additional charge for having to go through the process of staff time of putting this together and putting a levy on the property?
These are just the rates, so there's no penalty, no additional charges added to them.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
So that is our standard practice. We would have to go through a process to change that if we wanted to incentivize people to take care of this, rather than just being their kind of bank, if you will, and then have to process a new staff time for this, correct?
Correct. We would pass an ordinance to enact additional fees and penalties to apply here.
So maybe that might be something in some later future we can look at.
Councilmember Lawson? That was going to be my comment. That might be something we might look at down the road. It seems as if, in some of these situations, it's just, they're not going to bother to pay it, they're going to wait for us to levy it and go through administrative time and efforts because it's more convenient, and even though it's not a significant amount of money, it just seems to be a more administrative nightmare.
But it affects, you know, our ability to do other things.
Absolutely.
Because we're having staff have to go through this process, as well as county staff to put these assessments on there, so.
Mr. Mayor, a suggestion, if I might, just since we're looking at this. I think it's a good idea to provide the service to the public. It's nice that they don't have to get this done themselves, they can count on the city to do it. And occasionally, I see how somebody could miss a bill, that's fine. Perhaps if we do look at this, if it's brought forward, we might be taking a look at repeat offenders or something like that, because that might be the place where the citizens of Cattati are spending a little bit of money where they shouldn't have to, to take care of that. Just a thought.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that? Let me do that. I will open this up for public comment, if anybody has any issues on the outstanding backflow testing charges and levying. Seeing none, I will close the public comment on that.
Move to approve resolution establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and directing the levying of assessments for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-oh, thank you. Now we move on to consideration of objections to report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding in adoption of resolutions. Improving item is report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levying of assessments. Mr. Scott, I'm assuming that this is much of the same nature?
Similar item, but regarding delinquent sewer charges. So this item is for, there's a couple of properties that have been charged every two months, as is our custom here, for their water and sewer bills, and have not paid their sewer portion of the bill. And so, over the course of the year, it adds up, and the city has the option to then, you know, collect those fees by having assessment against that property. So similar to the last item, the city council met on June 14th to set a date for tonight for holding a public hearing, and then would consider adopting the attached resolution to go ahead and assess these properties for those delinquent sewer charges. That's all there is to the presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
And these, as I recall, are the accounts that they don't have waters, there's really nothing to turn off. It's sewer, it comes out, you can't really turn anything off, correct?
Correct.
So this is really the only way, and so therefore we don't have any way of penalizing this situation either, because they don't have water.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this?
Yeah.
Nope, pardon me. I don't know that there's a lot of public comment on this, but I will certainly open it up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
Now I'll move to adopt a resolution approving itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levying of assessment for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Good second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, if I may, when you have a moment, can you look to see if these are the continuous reoffenders? I'm curious if it's always the same people that continue to do this year in and year out.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay, and I will move on to the regular agenda item, and appointment of a voting delegate and alternate to the 2016 League of California Cities Annual Conference. Shall I report on this, Mr. Obit?
Yes.
When you have a moment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item is appointment of a voting delegate and alternate, up to two alternates for the 2016 League of California Cities Annual Conference, which this year is being held in Long Beach on October 5th through 7th. The annual business meeting is Friday, October 7th. In preparation for the annual conference each year, the league requires that member cities appoint voting delegates who will vote on conference resolutions at the annual business meeting. The voting delegate and alternates are customary city council members who are planning to attend the annual conference, and league bylaws also provide that the city council may appoint a city official to serve as a voting delegate or alternate if there's not sufficient, if sufficient number of council members in attendance. Attached to the staff report is some information about the conference itself, as well as the form that we will submit, indicating who's the voting delegate and the alternates. And this is, this is an appointment that is done annually by the council. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise that's the report.
Any questions from the council or city manager? Okay. Any interest in attending that particular conference?
Are you not able to attend?
No, I was interested in attending. But if I do attend, and I, it wouldn't be a default appointment, it would have to be voted on, but we should have an alternate in the event that I can't make it, I hit the lottery or something.
Well, I'd be willing to be an alternate if you could not attend.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, Mayor, and if you would, just because it's an action item, I'll call for public comment before you vote. Thank you.
You're going to have a comment, Mr.?
Actually, I'm going to have a motion for you, but I'm going to wait till public comment.
I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the appointment of League of California Cities? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
I'm still wondering to see if you're going to hit that lottery. That might be the funnest way we'd have an opening here. I think that would be a great thing. But with that, I'd like to move adoption of appointing a mayor, the mayor, excuse, I have a seen wrong, excuse me. The mayor is our voting delegate, and Councilmember Harvey is our alternate for 2016 League of California Cities Annual Conference.
And with the correction that she's our vice mayor, I will second.
Okay, right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And to me, if I had any appointment, Labor Commissioner, now we will move on to correspondence and pending legislation, no items tonight. So we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So always my favorite item. So the first, the first thing is Vice Mayor Harvey had mentioned earlier during announcements, National Night Out is coming up. This is the Cattati Police Department, we're partnering with the city recreation coordinator in hosting the National Night Out this, next Tuesday on August 2nd, starting at 6:00 PM. The event will be held at La Plaza Park, and of course, Cattati residents are invited and encouraged to attend. It should be a great night. We're planning a variety of games, and barbecue dinner will be served. We're looking at probably a $2 dinner is what we're planning on, so it'll be a cheap dinner, and hopefully a great night out for families. There, we're also planning on showing a movie, which is Zootopia. It's a public safety-oriented movie, appropriate for all ages, and a lot of the, you'll see a lot of the city staff there, of course, your police officers, some council members, and there'll also be a canine demonstration. So if anyone wants to put the bite suit on and do a canine demonstration, that's, that'll be good fun for the whole family. And then, just on some other things, this is talked about a little bit tonight already, but Village Walk, that's a 46-unit subdivision on East Cattati by Lancaster, that's currently starting construction. The first 14 units, they pulled building permits on the first 14 units, and so those are under construction right now. The foundations are being framed up for concrete pores, so they're moving quick on that. I know they want to get some houses up pretty quickly in the first phase of construction. And this is, it's a good location, you know, pretty much equidistant between, I haven't scaled on the map, but relatively in between the Cattati train station and Ranch Cattati Shopping Center, so it's a great location for new homes. There'll also be a park within that subdivision as well, with a play structure, so it'll be, it'll be a nice addition. And then on the Cattati Train Depot, you've probably noticed that Smart's busy doing a lot of work out there. The, a while ago, they put the platforms on, you know, earlier on, they'd formed up the foundations to the platforms and the stem walls, and they recently put the platforms on, which is the horizontal piece that people walk on to board and onboard trains. More recently, they added the station shelters, as well as the furniture, you know, the benches, the streetlights, the garbage cans and so forth, and the railings, the railings are going up now, too, which is nice. And you'll notice that the, that the look of the platform, shelters and the streetlights are very much like you see elsewhere in Sonoma County, which is a testament to a lot of teamwork with other cities, that we drove through Sonoma County Transit to get Smart to change their design and make it more appropriate for Sonoma County. And Ring County has longed for the ride, so I hope they like the new shelters. And then also, Smart just built the new Class 1 bike path between East Cattati Avenue and Golf Course Drive and Runner Park. So they've, you've probably recently seen that go in. That was a grant that the, that SCTA had provided to Smart to construct that segment of the pathway. All the cities and the county graciously agreed to provide that money to Smart to move that project forward. As you know, Smart's a high priority regionally, and so, again, another good example of cooperation to, you know, for the benefit of the overall county in that train system. And then, lastly, I'm happy to report that Smart did approve the change order for the crossing of East Cattati. So the Class 1 path in the plans that we had talked about earlier came to an end on the north side of East Cattati, but they didn't cross the street to the train depot. And that was, that was a subject of significant discussion between, between us and Smart, and Smart ultimately agreed to add money into the contract to have that crossing put in, rather than assuming that people are going to go down to San Taro to cross over and come back up, which just wasn't, I think, a very realistic assumption. So it's nice that they're moving forward with that. So that's also underway. So anyway, a lot more work in the next month out there, but it's all coming together nicely. And then, Old Redwood Highway, I think we talked about this already, I'm not going to get into much more detail on that, but that's, you know, when it's done, downtown will be repaved, the crosswalks, especially, well, the existing crosswalks, mid-block crossings will be improved, they'll look a lot cleaner, more visible. Charles, the intersection of Charles and Henry will be much improved. Right now, it's concrete that's pretty badly cracked up, so that'll all be upgraded, and there'll be a new lighted crossing at Page Street, which is the high-speed entry to downtown from Old Redwood Highway. And the, we have a million names for these, but the downtown, what I'm considering the downtown project is the project at 116 and Old Redwood Highway, not to be confused with the other downtown. We, don't get me started, we have like 10 names for every project, so I'm trying to be consistent here. So work is continuing to progress, as you can see out there, and we're expecting the West Plaza, which is the plaza on the corner in front of the Crossroads Center, is, will be poured, I believe, at the end of the week, and then the walls at both plazas will be going up shortly after that. So you'll be seeing a lot more work happening shortly. They, they took a pause for a while because they had some utility conflicts that were unexpected. It's an old road, and there's a lot of stuff there that utility companies don't know about, so they had to sort all that out, and then now they're rolling again, because all those things have been resolved. And then, you may have also noticed just little things around the community, the McGinnis landscaping and fence. Public Works recently replaced significant sections of the split rail fence on McGinnis Circle, and also mulched throughout the subdivisions, so there's a lot of nice new mulch in there, it looks, it looks good. Myrtle Avenue, the path that we had talked about in the budget study sessions, that was pretty badly buckled because of tree roots, has been repaired by Public Works, and so it's, those tripping hazards are now gone. And then- And then, um, Fleety Ranch, it's, uh, I think it's not lost on anyone, it's right across the street, but that one is also moving quite along, moving along quite nicely. The, um, that new, uh, natural pave pathway is in. That was a subject of much discussion earlier on. Uh, I think it looks pretty nice. And, and then, um, I think we're gonna be seeing here the, um, uh, the benches and the drinking water fountain and landscaping going in there shortly, as well as the, um, the information sign on the property. And separately, the, um, the design for building preservation is also progressing. So I expect, um, sometime this year, you'll be seeing that as well, to, um, to try to preserve those structures for the long term. And, um, I think with that, I've talked enough tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rovir. Any questions from Councilmember Blas?
Yes, please, thank you. I have a, a couple. Um, most of the path along Myrtle Avenue has been redone. Not a complete section yet, there's, and I, and I don't know if Public Works is done with that over there, but furthest east is, is not, it may not be necessarily needed, but there is one big, it looks like some route from maybe those willows that are there buckling up. So I just wanted to point that out. And, um, there's one more thing I wanna talk about with regards to the Smart Rail. There's some other, nobody can think of these things when, when the idea's going in, but there's a lot of always unintended consequences with everything we do. And, um, I've actually heard of two people now that as they're riding their bikes across the tracks have slipped and fallen. And not slipped because they're in a groove or anything, I mean, they're literally going diagonal across the groove, but it's, it's a very slick surface. And again, we're thinking, well, the trains are gonna drive across it, you know, not a big deal, they're on the rails. But anybody who could be, you know, riding a bike or walking or whatever, um, I, I think, I don't know, I have no solutions whatsoever what could be done. I just think it needs to be brought to Smart's attention that it's a very slick surface. I'm not saying people will fall every time they walk across it, but I know of two people on bicycles that have slipped on it right now. So just something I wanted to point out. Thanks.
So just, um, just to clarify, the, um, they're, they're going on East Cattati and they're crossing it relatively diagonal, perpendicular?
I don't know. It wasn't, it wasn't East Cattati at all. I think one was in Pen Grove and I think one was on McDowell Boulevard, so Petaluma's property. But if there are issues there, same material, could they be issues elsewhere along the rail line where there's road crossings? I would just say it's something that should be looked at at some level.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So you thought there might be concern, even if on East Cattati you would be crossing perpendicular?
E- every crossing is perpendicular, if you think about it. If it's not perpendicular, you're going right along with the train, right? So it's always a perpendicular or angled crossing, no matter where the crossings are, where the road is, where the train tracks are, there's always, it's always a cross of some sort. But I know of, like I said, I know of two people in two different locations that have slipped on their bicycles. And maybe it's a thing with a bicycle tire, just twisting it a little bit too much one direction and out it can slip. So it's happened twice. It, I mean, that's only two people that I know. I'm just, I'm just throwing caution out there that it's something that should be brought up to Smart and they can look at it and maybe address it, maybe not. I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rovir. Okay, now move on to city council member reports. Vice Mayor, our councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you. Um, we had Kids' Day, July 9th, and that was a lot of fun. I think that was since our last meeting, or was it before our last meeting? Because we-
That was, yeah, no way.
Well, I don't report out at closed sessions. All right, I'm just saying.
We missed the 12.
So anyway, so that was, that was fun. Um, had a lot of fun with that and, um, then also, and if anybody didn't catch it, Supervisor Rabbit was there with his puppy and everybody was oohing and aahing over the puppy dog. So that's why he excused her presence tonight. Um, I also already attended the fair, went to the opening day. It's really, it's, they've definitely changed around a lot of the setup, but I really enjoyed it and I liked the way they've moved things around and, um, they, it's fun with the theme actually, because they were highlighting all of the films that were filmed in the Sonoma County area in the flower displays. So there are a lot of wine bottles with water spurting out of them. So anyway, very much enjoyable and definitely recommend it to everybody. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Blas?
Thank you. Just, uh, one item. I, uh, attended the Health Action City Council Liaison Ad Hoc Committee and that was for Vice Mayor Harvey. Uh, it was really informative and I think I wanna go to those meetings from now on, but that means I have to take a half day off once a month or however often you guys meet. Uh, but it was really informative and it went over a number of issues. Briefly touched on universal access to quality preschools, affordable housing, the tobacco retail license, where in unincorporated Sonoma County, there's about 136 retail businesses that sell tobacco products. And 106 of those have already, um, approved and sort of paid their dues to this. It's like, there was like no, none of them seem to have any opposition to it, according to the county. Um, and that, these were county staffers that were reporting out on it. But about an hour of this meeting was spent on, uh, options for the regulations of marijuana. And I will say that, um, I learned a wonderful acronym. There's a new, new bureau in the state of California, which is the Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation. That's BMMR or Bummer, if you wanna look at it. All depends on how you wanna address that. Um, and I think they're gonna change the word to cannabis regulations and that's gonna screw it all up. Um, but it was really a, a long conversation and, and all but I think one city was there and everybody, um, kind of reported out on what their current situation is with medical marijuana. And I was, you know, I'm relatively up on what we have here, but, um, I don't know if we have certain limits like some cities have. And, and I'll get with you and I'll, I'll get with the city manager as well. I'm just kinda curious to follow up. I wrote notes on all of the cities. So, um, and Santa Rosa, of course, is, you know, moving ahead, uh, full steam. They've got a whole planning committee just on this topic here. Um, but one thing, just one of my takeaways was, um, there's a couple of bills, uh, in the state and if recreational use is something that gets passed, I think there's, there's gonna be a ballot measure on that. If it gets passed, cities would have to have an ordinance that specifically states something is not allowed. Just to not address it in an ordinance means it will be allowed. So it's a very interesting take. It's like, uh-oh, so what do we, we have to think of everything. So the county is gonna come up with, um, some draft ordinances that they're gonna eventually vote on. And we have the time to, because they're moving really fast on this, with the cities have the time to sit back and wait and see what comes in and then we can use those as templates. So there's time for it. But anyway, just, uh, just a heads up on that and that's what I have to report on.
Thank you. Councilmember Blas, Vice Mayor Harvey?
Uh, yes, even though I was gone, I attended the, uh, by teleconference, the, uh, Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. And for a change, I think I feel upbeat and I think we have some good news to report. Renner Park, um, did go before their council and they approved a year extension, um, by resolution. So now all, all the resolutions are received to move forward, um, for a year. We had a very, um, interesting, uh, long updated report from R3 Consulting, um, about, um, you know, the state of the agency and the things that they do well and the issues that we're facing and things like that. Um, I will, um, have Damian send, um, that presentation around to you, because it, it was really very informative, but long, so, you know, you can kinda pick and through. You know, as I've been saying for a really long time, um, especially cities like Cattati, we get, um, really a lot of benefit from it. And in fact, all the cities get, um, such a great benefit out of this. So the, um, the outcome of it is that, um, we directed the city attorney, or the, um, Waste Management Agency Attorney to work with the city attorneys and the county council, um, on a draft JPA agreement. Um, he, um, the, uh, agency council, um, kind of put out an outline out there and basically, um, the core programs would be similar to what we have today. It would be composting of green and wood waste, recycling of household hazardous waste, solid waste education and assistance and mandated planning and reporting. While we don't have a final solution on the composting, the way this is kind of worded in the direction that we're going, it, it puts the authority there and then a solution will be worked out. Because until you kind of put it out there and see what's available now and what the options are, you don't really, uh, know what, what is the most cost-effective, um, direction. You know, some folks are saying, well, gee, maybe it'll be most cost-effective to continue outhauling. Probably not, but you know, until you kinda can see what's out there, there is now, um, some, um, private interest in, in some of this. So it may mean that there are some smaller private interests that do it, rather than what we were thinking of, of one whole regional. It may end up being multiple smaller, um, private, um, solutions we come up with. But anyways, until we get out there, um, we don't really know. But this will give us, um, the authority, because it became very obvious to some of the other cities that, um, even though they had in their matrix had said, oh, well, just let the county do it. It became real obvious, real quick, real hard, when, um, the county tried to get Republic to do it and Republic said they really weren't interested in it, that that option was really off the table. So, um, it is a service that gets provided to our communities, all, all of these are. It's not a moneymaker. I mean, that's really the reality is that you can't make money in, in some of these things. And so it becomes then a service. And what's the most efficient and cost-effective way to provide that service, um, to all our constituents? So anyways, I'm, I'm happy, you know, that, that it got in the direction. I'm sure, um, our city attorney will be, um, very involved. The hope is that, um, that they can get, um, all the attorneys together and, uh, come back in October at our October meeting. So that's really what they're trying to do. So they'll meet in August and September to try and kinda knock out, um, you know, the kinks and stuff. So hopefully we'll have a new JPA agreement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Councilmember Blas?
That's really good news. Congratulations. Congratulations on that. Um, but yeah, I'd like to update the council and the community on, uh, Sonoma Clean Power and the county Mendocino's potential merger or them joining Sonoma Clean Power, perhaps is a better way of describing it. And you might remember that I mentioned this was coming up in front of the Board of Directors for a vote, uh, at our last meeting. It did indeed come up and was ultimately successful. Uh, quick background, substantial conversation. Uh, I think there was pretty much a hundred percent support for the concept, but in terms of the timeline, there was, oh, maybe roughly a third, maybe three out of nine votes that would prefer waiting a little bit longer. Because of that, we actually had our first waiting vote called for, for the first time in two and a half years. And it didn't actually change the outcome. It wound up being, oh, what was it, a seven-two vote ultimately. So what this looks like, if and when this finishes going through, because there's a few next steps. The JFK needs to be amended, Mendocino does have to ratify, but they did ask to join and we did offer so, these things seem likely. Once we start providing power to them, you will see in that region an approximately 19% reduction in GHG emissions, just because of the difference in the power package that you're selling, the components of the power. You'll see long-term an approximately 1%, roughly, a little movement there, decrease in rates. So it's not a huge decrease in rates, it's not big enough to make a huge impact for us, but it makes us a little bit bigger, you get a little bit help with buying. So that's good long-term for the community, I think. The board will grow potentially from nine to 11. That's a very manageable size. So, uh, it was an interesting meeting and hopefully will be a very good direction for both Sonoma County as well as Mendocino.
Thank you, Councilmember Blas. Um, of course, I was at the Kids' Day. I think that, uh, the city staff and the chamber commerce did a terrific job. Uh, wanna reach out and thank the, uh, Councilmember Rabbit for, uh, appearing there. Um, I thought it went really well. Uh, I think our new recreation coordinator got a very good, um, crash education in organizing an event and, um, accepted it very well and did it with, with grace under fire. Last Thursday, I was at the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities meeting and they had a presentation on homelessness. Um, and it was a really interesting meeting and some of the approaches that the county of Napa and the city of Napa are taking on the homeless issue. Little did I know that between Sacramento, Salongo, Napa, Sonoma and Marin, uh, Sonoma has the highest amount of homeless in the county. Now, of course, um, compared to some of those counties, we're pretty big in size geographically, but Sacramento certainly has a higher population. Um, I don't know if it's, well, there's some speculation that it might be climate-driven because it's a little bit more mild and, uh, less drastic than Sacramento County. But Napa County has a wonderful collaboration that they've got between the city and the state and some nonprofits and have built a new facility that's about two years old that houses roughly 64 people in the peak periods. Something to the effect of 42 men, the remainder women, and then a separate facility for roughly 15 families. But, uh, it's just a beautiful facility, um, and the collaboration and what they've done between the city and county and the nonprofits is tremendous. I was speaking to Supervisor Rabbit before the meeting and said that he should have the presenter from the county of, the city of Sacramento, who talked about the homeless and the numbers, and then a representative maybe from Napa County come over and give a presentation here in Sonoma County, because, um, what they're doing, of course, doesn't address everybody and there is a waitlist, but it's certainly a phenomenal, positive step forward to address some of the issues. And, you know, 30% are, 30% of the, the conditions creating the homelessness are, um, mental health, 30% are substance abuse, and the remainder is, um, a financial or unforeseen, um, circumstance within the family environment that may create a temporary condition. But, um, we know the impacts it has on the community, we know the impacts it has on the police department and, uh, you know, the first responders and things like that. And I just thought it was a fantastic program and, um, something that I would love to see us as a county and maybe some of the cities work together to, to really try to look at that. And so that was my report on that. And with that, um, now we remove to public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman?
You guys screw things up so much and turn them things around. I am now in fault for getting off at the Sonoma County Transit stop. Instead of insisting that the bus driver take me across to the Golden Gate Transit stop when the bus was going right onto Gravenstein. That's how much you guys turn this all around. You protect yourselves, you try to, okay. The other issues, the Village Walk, 2013, it, well, first in 2011, it only had the, um, Design Review Committee. There's never been any Cattati, um, city council vote approving on that. In 2013, July 2013, the, um, the, um, Design Review Committee went through. I went through every one, every 2013, looking for any kind of record of any extension given. There wasn't. On the sale between, to the new owner with Village Walk, you had, had, it was recorded on May 22nd. You had the item on May 10th. Before the deal was even signed, you guys have, went ahead and gave them exemptions through everything. There has not been soil tests in 2003. There were, even the design committee did not want to approve that project. There was a list of conditions of soil tests, everything. I, it took, I asked my paralegal instructor for extra credit because I was doing so much legal re- research on this. You guys need to stop this turning everything around. It's wrong. You're doing wrong and you, you deny it. It's, it's driving me nuts.
Ms. Alderman, are you almost done?
I'm, I'm, would not like to be, uh, excuse me, do not, it is-
Is this a non-action item?
Yes, I'm talking, I'm also go, gonna talk about Mr. Smart, um, Mr. Yes, I'm talking, I'm also going, going to talk about Mr. Smart, Mr. Rabbit and the SMART. I had information about the crossing arms coming down on Cattati citizens and paratransit. You guys got to talk all the time about SMART tonight. How much time did I have to be, actually delete, because your Brown Act violation, you, you misinterpret the law. Sorry, I'm having a hard time speaking tonight. You misinterpret the law, so I can't even get that issue, where we had SMART engineers and Damian helped me. How much are you going to limit my speech? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barrich?
First of all, I wouldn't call any merger between Sonoma County, Sonoma Clean Power and Mendocino any success. I think that leaves a lot open to argument there. And then, Mayor, you spoke about the homeless issue at some, at some length. You know, everybody's talking about the homeless issue except Cattati. And I've gotten all this lip service that we've been, we're going to talk about the homeless, but the only thing we do is let them freeze in the cold in the wintertime, and we're coming up on the fall, once again. It's still not on your agenda, and I want the public to know it's not going to get on the agenda, because you guys don't give squat about the homeless. That's pretty clear now. Also, none of you have the right to be pointing towards a city engineer over here and telling him what kind of report you want back regarding weed abatement. You're not supposed to do that. It's in your councilman handbook. The only person supposed to be taking orders from you is our city manager here. So, stop dictating what you want to see done, brought back to you, from any other members of the city staff.
Was this on the agenda?
Yes, it's, we asked, because we were talking about-
Weed, weed abatement?
A city manager's report. Now, regarding the city manager's report, he brought up the fact about National Night Out. The city manager brought up National Night Out. And I would suggest, maybe you bring in a dunk tank, and let the citizens and the, and the children take a few shots at dunking you guys in the dunk tank, so that maybe they can get out of, you know, being honorary mayor here. You know, let the kids try to get out of it. Now, regarding Supervisor Rabbit, he talked about the roadwork and the road costs differences between Marin County and Sonoma County. And the fact is, you can't compare maintenance costs in Marin with maintenance costs in Sonoma. You cannot compare a road where there's 10,000 car trips a day, having the same maintenance costs of a Sonoma County road that has maybe 1,000 car trips a day. It's apples and oranges. I don't appreciate the county supervisor spinning the mileage, the road mileage of both counties, and how somehow, you know, we should have all this pity on the county supervisors and what they're up against. The fact is, they have, what, unfunded liabilities now facing the county, of where, what, over $200 million? We're supposed to feel sorry for them? How they have mismanaged our tax dollars over the years? You know, you guys need to be, you know, be a little critical when he gives you out these numbers. And then, Mr. Lammon says, you know, the last 10 years have been brutal. Been brutal, you know? City government has not been brutalized by the last 10 years. You know, if anything, you guys took some concessions, you've given all the concessions back, and then some. Government's made out like bandits. It's the private sector that's been hit hard and brutalized, and had the city not been spending millions of dollars on your outside consultants for your fancy plans for this and that, that you're never going to have any money to, to build out, we would have had reserves up the yazu. You people have mismanaged.
Thank you, Ms. Barrich.
Yeah, let me, can I have one more minute?
No, you may not.
You've been so gracious.
You have been exceptionally gracious as well. Anyone else want to address the council on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I will close. Public comment on that.
I'd just a comment, slightly different point of view. Good question, how do we define success? Because everybody has different views, and understandably, what success might be. In terms of Sonoma Clean Power and Mendocino, I think, excuse me, I'm speaking. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be able to reply to-
Councilmember Lammon, please continue.
And I'm not out of order. Now, continuing, if you will not shut me down from the audience, I will take a moment and actually ask the city attorney if I can briefly comment on the statements.
A brief comment or a question to staff is permissible? A dialogue with the public or public comment is not-
Well, the dialogue is one-way, because I didn't initiate that, so, and it would have been brief if I hadn't been interrupted. So, I'll try to finish quickly. But the bottom line, as I stated, you might have missed this, with Sonoma Clean Power and Mendocino being part of that, the first thing you see is approximately a 19% reduction in GHG emissions. That's huge. That's huge. You shouldn't leave, Mr. Barrich, you need to hear this. This is one of the largest things you can do in the county. And then, the 1% in rate savings, not as impressive for us as individual ratepayers, but you know, when you add that up, that's in the tens of thousands, excuse me, hundreds of thousands of dollars that stays in our county. I'd call that success, so I think it's a good thing. I think it's one of those fancy plans that was mentioned, and you can see a lot of them actually come into fruition. So, just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilman Lammon. I think there is one point of clarification on the statements made during the public comment on non-action items that need a clarification. We have 1,884 miles of road in the county, and the county of Marin has 400, significant difference in what we have available to do our road paving. So, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:57. Thank you, have a wonderful evening. See you next time. We're here all week.